Afternoon everybody. I'm afraid the chaplain hasn't made it here this afternoon. So we might be doing prayers today, I'm sorry about that. So please sit down, be seated, thank you. Okay, there are no plans for a fire alarm test. If you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please ensure mobile phones are switched off or on silent. Restrooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details should you require one. Please can we stop chattering, councillor Kelly, thank you. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. And will eventually be loaded onto the council's YouTube channel. Can I please remind all members that whilst we can disagree politically, please remain respectful to each other whilst dealing with council business. Now, members of the public and officers, you're reminded that under the openness of local government bodies' regulations since 2014, the press and public may film, audio record, photograph and use social media whilst the meeting is in progress. And as long as no disruption is caused to the meeting. Anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Now, it's my sad duty to advise of the sudden death in service of a colleague last month. Paul Finnegan worked on the housing support fund in the welfare benefits and debt advice team for the last three and a half years. He had previously worked for the council as a test and trace operative during the Covid pandemic. At the age of 61, Paul's death was sudden and unexpected, which, as you can imagine, was shocking for all his colleagues. Paul will be missed by all who knew him. And on behalf of the council, I send my sincere condolences to Paul's family and friends. Can I now ask you to stand as a mark of respect for our colleague? Thank you. A couple of announcements. I'd like to thank everyone who attended the mayor's Sunday lunch the other week. It was a tremendous success. I'd also like to remind members that Carol's in the chamber, yes, the Christmas word again, will take place on Wednesday, the 17th of December 2025 with a 6:30pm arrival and a start time of 7pm. And I hope to see you all there, thank you. I would also like to thank all those who've been involved in celebrating Diwali, the festival of light, which is an important event for the Hindu and Sikh communities. We had a very colourful celebration last Friday under the market canopy. And myself, the deputy mayor, leader and chief executive, have had the pleasure of joining celebrations at the Good Hindu Society Mandir and the BAPs Mandir yesterday. On behalf of the council, we have sent our very best wishes to all those celebrating. It is the BAPs Mandir 10th anniversary celebration on Saturday, the 8th of November. And I'm sure that everyone is welcome to attend, I will certainly be visiting. Now, depending on progress, how we progress today, I may adjourn to take a short comfort break, but we will see how we proceed. Declarations of interest, has anybody got any interest on the matters on the agenda? Just give it a five, so please note that when discussing agenda item 15, the notice of motion on Lancashire Pension Fund, councillors who are members of the fund should declare a personal interest in this matter. They will need to declare their interests prior to the item being discussed. You can remain in the chamber, participate in the discussion and vote on the item being considered. Councillor Brown.
Madam Mayor, yes, I am a member of the Lancashire Pension Fund in my LCT hat on, thank you.
Councillor Potter.
Thank you. Just on item nine, which is the cost of living support grant, it does mention about local community food hubs. I am a member and former trustee of the Intact Community Centre, which runs one such hub.
Councillor Saxena.
Mr Mayor, I paid out of the Lancashire Pension Fund as a county, former county councillor.
Councillor Bailey.
Yes, same again, item 15, Lancashire County Pension Fund.
Mr Mayor.
Personally trust a recipient of pension from Lancashire County.
Hasn't heard you indicate that you wish to speak.
I don't know if I need to declare it, sorry. I didn't know I needed to declare it, but I'm doing a motion on behalf of councillor Atkins on bus lanes and I'm a car owner.
Okay, right. Thank you councillor Naffa, I knew it was going to be one of those meetings today, thank you. Right, item three is the minutes of last meeting from the council meeting held on the 21st of August 2025. Are members happy that I sign the minutes as a correct record? Thank you, I will sign those later. Now, before I proceed to item four, I'd like to bring in councillor Thompson, who would like to make a brief personal statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last time I made a brief personal statement, I was in trouble with the Labour Party. So I'm not quite sure I'll upset this time, but anyway, no doubt somebody. As you well notice, I have changed parties, I've gone from the Conservative Party to the Reform Party. It was a difficult decision, I've been a member of the Conservative Party for over 15 years and a loyal supporter of the Conservative Party, but unfortunately, I seem to be, this party seemed to be leaving me. There's a lot of things that I didn't really agree with and it was just becoming more and more obvious to me that I was more in tune with the Reform Party. Something is broken in British politics. And I have to say, I think from my point of view, Reform has got the answers. I was waiting for a few laughs today, that's very good. But it's the only party that offers a new perspective and new horizons. Reform and we'll be, we'll be ready for the challenge going ahead. Obviously, there's not a lot more, I wouldn't want to make it a long speech, but I'm very happy being welcomed into the Reform Party. And I've had a lot of encouragement and a lot of my residents have been falling over themselves to congratulate me. So I know that I've made the right decision and it's a decision that I've made because I, I believe that I made the right decision, it's a decision of conscience and I'm happy to stand with my conscience. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Thompson. Item four is questions from members of the public, however, they have been non-submitted today. Now, I'll take item five, which is questions to cabinet members, chairs of committees and representatives of outside bodies. Members are entitled to ask a question of any cabinet member or chair of a committee within their portfolio or terms of reference, and only one supplementary question may be asked provided it is relevant to the original question. We haven't received any written notifications for questions for members appointed to serve on outside bodies. So if anybody would like to ask any questions, but can I remind you that if you have any questions on the information items, which are 17, 18, 19 on the agenda, you need to ask a question now and you won't be able to ask a question later on, thank you. I'll double check, thank you, councillor Little, you're first please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, excuse me. We all know that the parks are the heart of our communities, places where families spend time together, where children play safely, where people walk the dogs, exercise or simply take a moment to breathe and relax. Taking a beauty spot, they are central to our residents' wellbeing and the pride people feel where they live. I've been out recently speaking to local residents in the ward next to mine. And when I've been speaking to local residents, I'm hearing similar themes. What's happening with our parks? It's worn out, the play areas are no good, they're looking tired, there's no flower beds, there are damaged paths. Just a general feeling that some of the parks don't offer much at all. Let's take Ashton Park as one example. Why would you go to Ashton Park? What has it actually got to offer? Compare that with the parks that you find in our neighbouring areas. Warden Park in Leyland offers a well-equipped playground, a sensory play features, model railway, taking free rides, historic maze, restored wall guard, the mini golf, sports pitches, orienteering and a beautifully maintained formal garden. Happy Mount Park in Morecambe has a splash park, woodland trails, playground, miniature railway, trampolines, adventure golf, multi-sport pitches, cafe, events to keep families coming to the back week after week. Stanley Park in Blackpool, boating lakes, golf course, tennis courts, skate park, bowling greens, gardens, cafes, sports facilities that draw visitors in from across Lancashire. Witty Grove Park in Bamber Bridge is a much smaller park, has inclusive playground, sports field, cafes, woodlands, sense of community care and attention.
Councillor Little, can you just say who you're going to ask your question to?
Okay, okay, okay. So all that is offered for our residents within a short drive from Preston, why would councillor Bailey come to Ashton Park?
Thank you, thanks for the question. I mean, to be fair, I never thought I'd speak about Ashton Park again for a while, but there you go. So I'll be honest, I agree with you, I do think you look around South Ribble, for example, Warden Park and Park in Morecambe as well, they are exceptional parks. And I guess, you know, from our city's perspective, you know, we are a city. Obviously, in the sort of areas of the city, you know, we spent a lot of money. Obviously, in the city sense, you look at the animated scheme, the Harris, our Moundness House, the youth zone, obviously transfer to the bus station, so I guess when we obviously have the same budget size as, say, South Ribble, obviously a lot of their budgets are even bigger and we've chosen to spend the money on that. Now, I'm not saying that doesn't mean our parks are as valuable, we have to, you know, exactly spend money if we want to. But the same time with our parks, you know, we're spending £2.5 million on Waverley Park, part of an up fund with the BMX bump track, upgrading the actual play facility on there, the football pitches pavilion on there. More Park, we spent about £2 million on phase one of More Park, it's a lot of the heritage of More Park and obviously part of the up fund, the further £3 million on the expanded lake and obviously the play area and surrounding areas of More Park as well. Obviously, National Park, we obviously had a plan back in 2018, obviously we voted on that then, you know, due to residents, feedback from that, we decided to, you know, I guess start from scratch on Ashton Park. So, you know, we are back on with Ashton Park. Also, we spent a huge amount of money as well. We've obviously spent a lot regarding money from the UK SPF, just upgrading a lot of the play areas on there. We understand money to be done, that's why we're putting an extra £250,000 into the budget of this financial year and the next 10 years to upgrade as part of the play strategy, I do think what can be done. But I guess to answer your question directly, why our parks maybe aren't as good as South Ribble? I think it's because when you look at the assets, particularly saying the city centre assets we own, it's about choosing that priority. Now, sometimes we're in a decision where, say, South Ribble can spend a huge amount of money on, say, Warden Park. Obviously, they've always had the tradition of having the small model railway on there as well, which has, you know, really good roots of volunteers on that park as well. So, you know, that's why we chose to spend the money. Ultimately, if you had more money, you know, we could have spent more on parks. But ultimately, we could say comparing us safe South Ribble, I think it's quite uncomparable, that's my honest opinion on it. But, you know, we are spending a lot of money on parks, we recognise it. And obviously, there is more to be done, but yeah, it's just about how we spend that money to best support Preston as a city. Thank you.
Have you got a supplementary councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You didn't actually answer the question and didn't give one reason to go to Ashton Park. I can give you a couple now and I will give you a question shortly. One of the reasons is you could go to play basketball. There's a basketball court that was put in there after the 2012 Olympics, I'm assuming, it's got the Olympic rings. I invited my nephews up from Lyddon to play basketball with me and we went to that park. I don't know if you've been in or when the last time you went, it is in massively disrepair. Another reason you might go to a park would be to sit and admire natural beauty spots. There are none on Ashton Park, there are no plants, wildflowers, there is literally nothing. The parks have not been developed, they're rotting, they're rusty, they're not fit for purpose. Due to labour losing councillors in both Ashton and Leirong Larches, a direct question, is the plan now just to ignore Ashton Park and move forward and improve other areas of the city? And are you just moving on from it? Thank you.
I'm very sorry, I didn't think I answered the question, I think it's because of all the shit, I was trying to, I guess, ask a short question, I'll give you a more direct answer. But just, I think regarding what is it to do on Ashton Park, you know, we've recently refurbished the tennis courts in Ashton Park. So you can play tennis, there's basketball, obviously there's two players as well with calisthenics as well. As I said, there is more to be done, but, you know, we were about to spend £12 million on Ashton Park and obviously that's what we'd spent a long time getting in, which obviously, I know the Lib Dems obviously were opposed. We then changed our mind on that, so there was going to be huge amounts of investment that was going into Ashton Park. And obviously, that's something that the residents didn't want, we can learn from that. At the same time as well, obviously, our officers are dealing with a huge amount of work. As I mentioned, from the level and up funding amount that we're going in. I think you mentioned the tree planting from the UK SPF fund as well, we've planted, I think, 17,000 new trees and also as well, we're doing a brand new survey on all of our trees right across it. In terms of answering your question directly, I've given you what you can do in Ashton Park. And it's just unfortunate that that investment didn't come to fruition. I do want to see, obviously, plans developed for Ashton Park, but a lot of it depends on the officer's time. And again, we've got local reorganisation coming in as well. Ashton Park isn't forgotten, when you talk about timescales, you know, it was 2018 when that plan was sort of, you know, caught on the back burner regarding the actual, you know, sporting facility in Ashton Park. So obviously, I don't know how long it took before then because I wasn't the cabinet member, but it takes a long, long time. And it's more in time, we're in the delivery phase, you know, we're spending millions and millions of pounds on delivering things on different parts. And, you know, unfortunately, it was a decision that this, in a way, this full council took regarding the decision in Ashton Park.
Councillor Peak, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On this question, I think is for the leader of the council. On the 26th of June, council resolved that council agreed to the city entering into a friendship agreement with the city of Hebron. And then a few dot dots. In the report submitted to the council for discussion on this matter, it stated, "We also remain committed to exploring a similar friendship with an Israeli town or city." At the time of the vote on the 26th of June, Liberal Democrats allowed a free vote amongst their members. And I voted for the motion for the friendship agreement with Hebron on the basis of the commitment to explore a similar agreement with an Israeli town. My question is, what efforts and what progress has been made towards achieving that commitment?
Thank you councillor Peak, yes. In what we always said we wanted to do was to implement the first friendship first and see how that worked. And then after that has been done, look at the Israeli town. However, obviously, there has obviously been issues within Hebron, as you know. And obviously, we've had things put on hold because the ambassador and other people involved in ceasefire round negotiations, discussions around the ceasefire negotiations, and I'm sure we can all, every single one in this chamber, welcome the fact that we do have cessation of violence there. So obviously, we're looking to implement the first one, that has not yet happened. Well, once it is completed, we'll then move on to look at what else we can do in terms of the Israeli situation. But we always said we want the first one to be implemented to bed in and then we'll move on to the next arrangement potentially. Thank you.
You've got a supplementary councillor, thank you. Councillor Actar, please.
Madam Mayor, this is a question for the cabinet member for health and wellbeing. Preston's recognised as a real living wage employer. I think that's a really important part of our heritage and our cultural and political development over the course of recent years. Can the cabinet member of wealth building tell me, assure me that we're going to implement the new uplift, that's right, the uplift, that's been announced for the real living wage? And secondly, could she tell me what the expected benefits are for the city? But also in terms of our relationship with our anchor institutions and the supply chain that serves our city? Thank you.
Thank you for the question councillor Actar. The new rate for the accredited real living wage was announced yesterday and it's going to be £13.45 per hour. It currently is £12.60 an hour, so this is an increase of 85 pence per hour, which is an increase of 6.7%. And I think this is excellent news for low-paid workers. The real living wage rates are now worth, and by the way, I should say that's the rate for outside London, London gets a higher rate. The real living wage rates are now worth £2,418, more than the current government legal minimum. It is anticipated that the government will raise their living wage on the 1st of April and it's thought that that'll be to £12.71, so it's still a big increase over the government's, what is expected with the government. And of course, the real living wage applies to 18, 19 and 20-year-olds, whereas the government's one doesn't and they have a minimum wage which currently is £10 an hour for 18, 19 and 20-year-olds, which I think is completely unfair because I don't see that it's any cheaper to be an 18, 19 or 20-year-old than somebody that's 21. And so the real living wage is the same for everybody 18 and above. Nationally, half a million workers are set for a pay boost as over 16,000 employers have signed up to the real living wage. The real living wage is the only UK wage rate which is independently calculated based on what is needed to cover the cost of living. And of course, we've all seen how the cost of living has gone up for everybody. And recent research by the Living Wage Foundation shows that as inflation grew over the past year, many of Britain's 4.5 million low-paid workers have struggled to make ends meet and have actually, some of them have had to resort to food banks. Two in five have been forced to resort to food banks in the past year, rising to over half, 56% for low-paid workers who have dependent children. Here in Preston, we'll be celebrating Living Wage Week on Wednesday, the 12th of November. And it'll be held in the Harris from 8.30am and if anybody's interested in coming, please let me know. We have as a guest speaker Michael Conlan of Conlan Construction, which is a local real living wage employer. There'll also be panel representatives of Ethical Pixels, Believe, Care and Support and Dig In, who are all real living wage employers. We know that several employers who are currently not accredited are actually coming to the event and obviously, we're hoping to persuade them to become accredited. And on our website, there is a case study for the Fox Centre, who are a real living wage employer and showing the benefits for them. The Preston Action Group will continue to promote the real living wage to employers throughout Preston, including to any anchor institutions who are not currently accredited. And tomorrow, our meeting with the vice chancellor of the University of Lancashire to discuss becoming accredited because they are not currently accredited. The council will implement this increase on the 1st of December, as per usual. 115 staff will be eligible for the increase, which includes 38 casual workers. In addition, we currently have five agency workers who will benefit from the increase. So I think it's really good news, both from our staff point of view and for people in Preston, thank you.
Have you got a supplementary councillor?
Very quick supplementary, Madam Mayor. Given that there's some brilliant young people in the audience today, welcome to your chamber. Would we invite, make sure we send an invitation to our young people, local colleges as well to partake, partake in the event that you're hosting on the real living wage? Thanks.
Conlan Newman College is an accredited employer and I'm sure they will be there. Also, the maths bit of Lancaster University, whatever it is that's on London Road, they're also accredited, will be there. I can't remember if Preston Colleges is accredited or not, but if they're not, then we will certainly be approaching them if we haven't already done so. In fact, they're not yet currently, and so they're one of the ones on our target list because they are also an anchor institution, thank you.
Councillor Witten, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a question for councillor Rollinson. Back in January 2024, we received a report on the condition of the Guildhall. Apologies if I've missed something, but it's been a long time since that and we're aware that there have been reports commissioned externally. Can you give us an update on where we are currently in relation to planning or resurrecting the Guildhall or what the plans are for the future? Thank you.
So there's still no decision on whether we try and fix the Guildhall or replace it. There are obviously the two options. The external report that we did commission looks at the commercial side of that, really. We know plenty about, you know, the rack now and the position we're in, we know that much better now. But we do need an independent view of what is commercially viable. Not that it needs to be commercially viable necessarily because most of these venues are subsidised, we know that, they're nearly all subsidised. Even the big arenas have sponsors and arts money and councils behind them. So we don't expect it to necessarily be profit-making or even wash its face. But we do need to see what the best option is for Preston for the next, you know, 20, 30, 40 years or longer. And that's where we're at just now.
You got a supplementary councillor, Witten?
Yeah, just a very brief one, thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you have a timescale, any idea of a timescale when it's going to come back to council?
I've always wanted to make that decision, that announcement before the end of this year, we're getting closer now. It could end up being a budget decision, I suppose, but I want us to set a direction as soon as possible.
Councillor Guy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'd like to ask a question about local government reorganisation. I have a question for councillor Brown, as per my email to him this morning. So I understand that the administration favours a solution whereby Preston joins with Ribble Valley with Lancaster in a unitary authority. This is the point where I kind of need a map, but I'm assuming that everyone in the room has the local government boundaries burned into their retinas, so, you know, you have to do your best. For the most part, that seems fine. However, the resulting authority would take on a very odd shape. Because Wireborough extends well east of the M6, the proposed unitary that results would take on, I think, the shape of a Pac-Man. It would have a big hole in the middle between Preston and Lancaster, around the town of Gustang. And this is not something that anyone would come up with if they sat down to draw a boundary from scratch. It was sort of flying in the face of common sense. When travelling from Preston to Lancaster on the A6, the M6 or the West Coast Main Line, you'd leave the authority when you left Preston, travel through somewhere else and then re-enter the same authority when you got to Lancaster. And there would be an obvious silliness in the same council being, say, the highways authority for Lancaster and the highways authority for Preston, but not being the highways authority for the A6 corridor that goes between them. So I'd like to... So I'd like to say that we don't need to be the prisoner of a historic accident like this. The solution would be to depart a bit from the district boundaries and place one and a bit divisions from Wire within, quote unquote, our authority. So I was hoping the administration would commit to advocating for such a solution so as to avoid drawing a local government map that no one in the future would consider sensible.
Thank you. And thanks for the prior notice. It is appreciated. I mean, what we're facing is 15 leaders having conversations about how we start carving things up. It's a very, very difficult situation to be in. So what might seem easy in terms of the reality where the negotiations are, it's not as easy as you might think. So out of all the district leaders or the district councils, every single one is wanting to have the new unitary on existing boundaries along with the county. It's only, I believe, Blackpool as a unitary which is looking at a different position. As well, the government is not encouraging changes to existing boundaries, local government boundaries. So they're actually actively discouraging it. It doesn't mean it can't be done, but they're discouraging it. So in the situation we are, we're going to continue negotiating for the Preston-Ribble Valley-Lancaster position. However, we are prepared to keep the matter under review because we're still at a stage which is not finalised and the rationale of what you say doesn't make sense. There's other rationales which could fit as well, especially in Manbyville Valley and other places. But at the moment, we're going to stick to what we got, but we'll keep it under review. So thanks for the question.
Have you got a supplementary councillor, Guy? Thank you. Councillor Henshaw, please.
Get which button to speak. Thank you, madam mayor. So this is a question for the leader, but hopefully you can extend this invitation on behalf of the Preston Independents. So on Sunday, Children of the Ghetto have been working with 20 other organisations, including Christians for Palestine, local mosques, Women Against the Far Right, Preston South River Trades Council and Disabled People Against Cuts. And they've arranged for a reading of the approximately 20,000 children's names that have been killed by the genocide in Gaza or during the genocide in Gaza. So we're wondering if, as it's different organisations doing, reading out the names for an hour on Sunday, would any of the councillors like to come and join the councillors that are meeting at County Hall to read out a share of the names there on Sunday? Thank you. Let me know if you're interested.
Thank you, councillor Henshaw. I mean, obviously, situation in Palestine, lives lost has been horrific. So obviously, we do support like events like that and I'm sure we will have the presence of some sort there. Thank you.
Have you got a supplementary councillor, Henshaw? Councillor Vora, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. Could I ask the leader his position concerning the many residents who have expressed concerns about Lancashire County Council's failure to deliver the appropriate level of new school provision in our growing city?
Thank you very much. Yeah, it is a huge frustration. The original city deal proposals that were signed many years ago did suggest we want to have three new schools, two primary schools, one secondary school. We, as the council, secured through the planning process, we've secured sites on planning developments for these many new schools. The problem we have is that the county council is currently not in the process of delivering them, the want to expand existing schools. Frustration we have as County Council Labour Group and obviously actually yourself, Johnny, is that we are heavily outnumbered, we're five each on a council that has about 53 or 54 reform members. So obviously, we're going to do what we can to change that situation. So we're going to call for a meeting with the leader of the county council, Stephen Atkinson, but we're also going to get in contact with our Secretary of State, Bridget Phillipson about that situation because we do need to have school facilities. As the city expands, it's right that we do have the right schools as we have more people. And the Tory County Council and the Reform County Council before have failed really badly. So we're going to do something about that and actually, right or wrong, let's see if we can actually get something moving on it as well as meet with the leader of the county council. Thank you.
Have you got a supplementary councillor, Vora? Councillor Thompson, you've indicated you want to come in on this one?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, I think this has been on the agenda here for a while about the provision of schools in Preston. And I think at the end of the day, it's down to the government's allocation of funding for schools as to where it goes. And I don't think it's just down to the county council. So that's just my, from the information that I have. Thank you, Mr.
Councillor Potter, did you want to come in on this one as well? Thank you.
Not surprisingly, madam mayor, I will come on to this. Firstly, I appreciate Labour coming on board and actually on this campaign. It is a shame, Matthew, in 2022, you abstained on a vote to fund the new high school, which you personally abstained on in the budget because I put it forward and every Labour councillor, about three of the Labour councillors in here, all abstained on that vote. It is an absolute travesty what is happening with schools and we have found as more revelations come out just today, that the big excuse that LCC came up with, that they didn't have access to the land, was not true because they controlled the land that was holding up the whole process. And so for seven years, I've been banging this drum as we've had more and more people. My colleague here, councillor Duke, her own family was due to be split between schools because there aren't the provisions. And so every time we get close to actually spending money on an actual school, they decide practically, beg your pardon, we have to expand the existing ones. And so we never hit that viability threshold. It's mistake repeated after mistake, repeated after mistake. And for one, and we might have to do as a council something, we might have to be against expansions of existing schools because that might be the only way we get the school that was promised. And it was promised in 20, 10 years ago, Lancashire County Council put out information saying, we will build those schools. And now they're saying it's beyond the lifespan of Lancashire County Council now. They have kicked it into the long grass and the new reform administration should be absolutely ashamed of themselves.
Councillor McMon, please. Oh, sorry. Leader, did you want to come back in?
Yeah, possible, yeah. I don't think there's a moral high ground on this, John. I think we're all in agreement that obviously the city deal was signed, it was a Tory-lib government policy, as you know. Labour supported it here, we supported it at the county hall, but when Jennifer was in charge of the county council, the plans were there through the city deal process to make sure that the county did build those three schools. And obviously, it went conservative and now Reform. But I think we've got to be realistic about who is the best person to ask because do you actually believe Reform are going to listen to you? Listen to me? We can try, but I think we need to go higher because it does need to go to the Secretary of State this because it was a promise from the county council number of years back. There's obviously over development without left for schools, kids are missing out, they're going on buses one or two miles, as we know, to schools that they don't want. So the best way to do it is we do have a Labour Government, we approach the Labour Government. So we'll do that as well as lobbying LCC. Thank you.
Councillor McMon, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. Please, could the cabinet member for Culture and Arts share with the council the public reaction and response to the recent reopening of the Harris?
Thank you, councillor McMon, for your question. I would be delighted to provide an update. The doors to the Harris reopened to the public on Sunday, the 28th of September, officially opened by the freeman of the city, Nick Park, myself and madam mayor. Overwhelmingly, the response has been incredibly positive with many visitors referring to it being like meeting a friend again, feeling like they've come in home. And they've also stated that the transformation is wonderful. With a large scale project of this nature, there have inevitably been some minor TV issues. However, the Harris staff have responded to these quickly and efficiently, ensuring the visitor experience is maintained. I'd like to say that on average, the Harris has seen 15,000 visitors a week over the past three weeks, almost double what which we had predicted. Obviously, I'd like to thank all the council staff involved in the project and in particular my cultural services team, who have worked incredibly hard to deliver a fantastic end result for the people of Preston and visitors of our city. Thank you.
Do you have a supplementary councillor, McMon? Thank you. Councillor Landless, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm not quite sure who I'm aiming this question at. It's either the leader or councillor decide. But what it is, I spoke to a constituent the other day who was having horrendous problems in filling in forms on behalf of her Down syndrome son. This lady was 78 and her Down syndrome son is 54. And it had taken her 10 days to fill in forms because she'd been told by the council that they were no longer going to pay her son's rent on the flat and that he'd have to apply for universal credit. And it had taken her 10 days to do this and she still hadn't completed the process. And it got me thinking, and I'm not particularly computer literate, I'm okay, but I'm, you know, not brilliant. And I struggle, you know, finding things on the council website or getting information and to be able to help people. And I just wondered whether they have a think of, is there a way that they could get through? For example, on the phone, if you ring the council, you just get given loads of loads of options. And then at the end, it doesn't give you an option to speak to anybody. So you've really got nowhere. A way of information and helping people, particularly those who are older and not computer literate, and people who are disabled, in terms of helping them get advice on how to fill forms in or just get information of what grants are available or what things are available from the council. I just wondered whether one of you could put any thought to this and how we could improve the situation? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Landless. And thank you for the question. It's a very important one. It's one that's in the back of my mind every time I go to see the officers because every time a proposal is put forward, an efficiency proposal where we do something new, where we use AI on a telephone, for example, I always ask, what are we going to do about the people who can't use these systems, who can't use computers, who aren't able to? So I always challenge them and they always tell me that will any, a large multiple of the cost savings will be used to help those people who can't, who need the help in particular. So I'm assured that we do look after these people, but I take on board your point that how do you get to whoever needs to talk to them in the first place? I'll be looking into it in further detail, councillor Landless. Thank you.
Have you got a supplementary councillor, Landless? Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. Question I was going to ask, actually councillor Pete asked it, but I can come up with another question from Liam. The question is councillor Valerie Wise. We had the White Ribbon Initiative a while ago and at the time, we were told this would be, would really make a difference to the safety of women, et cetera. And at the time, we did say, we hope it doesn't become a talking shop. And the only two emails I've had from the White Ribbon Organisation have been to either go to a lecture, perhaps because somebody's written a book about violence to women or something like that. So I was wondering if you could tell us how has that White Ribbon Initiative, a lot of us took part in, benefited the women of Preston? And I know, I haven't given you notice on this, you're going to have to make it on the hoof, but it would be important, if you can't answer it, to actually give us a report in the future at some point. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. We've recently become an accredited local authority as a white ribbon local authority and we're having an event, but I can't probably remember, I think it could be the 6th, 5th of December. And I will make sure that all councillors are made aware of it. I can't honestly remember the details of the event or even if I've got them yet, but certainly we want to ensure that, no, this isn't just a talking shop, that we are, and particularly we'll be relying on male councillors to be advocates for other men and boys and in terms of that violence against women and girls is really wrong. I understand, I've been told, that Reform have removed the white ribbon flag from Lancashire County Council. So perhaps you might like to use your influence with them to actually reinstate it. And so I hope, I assume that we're going to be flying the white ribbon flag on a tariff event and certainly I'm sure we'll be supplying councillors with further information in due course. Thank you.
You have a supplementary councillor, Thompson?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll just say that I don't think it's down to just a flag. I know, I think it is down to intent and people's intent to push it. So, but I will speak to them and I don't think it's like, but it's more important than just flying a flag. It's about people's safety, women's safety, especially in this day and age. Thank you.
Still a couple of questions? Oh, sorry.
Come back because I think that it is symbolic and it actually shows that the local authority does take this issue seriously. So it might be like tiny in one sense, but actually I think it isn't. And the fact that the LCC under Reform have decided they don't want to put a flag, I think is fairly significant. And it makes me wonder, what are they going to be doing about advocating in terms of white ribbon and against violence against women and girls?
Thank you.
I know, I know I'm not supposed to stand up and answer the question.
No, you don't have, you don't have a right.
I just like to say, they do have, they do have a very cognitive champion for women. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ward, please. Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. This question is for councillor Hindle of Arts and Culture. With the exciting news that the 2027 Tour de France will include three UK stages as part of the Grand Depart and the widely reported news that this is likely to go through Preston as it travels from the Lake District to Manchester, this obviously is a massive potential for our city. As many of you will know, the Tour de France is the world's biggest sporting event. When it last came to the UK visiting Yorkshire, over three and a half million visitors saw the event and it raised over £100 million for York's economy in two and a half days. Clearly, such a big event coming to our city is a real opportunity for us to seize and take, a chance for us to promote healthy lifestyles, to promote community pride and to promote cycling as in general. Clearly, with something so big coming on the horizon, I'd like to think we'd be ahead of the curve, making sure that not only does it fleetingly pass Preston, but we become a major part of that event and that we also seek the opportunity in both the build-up and post-cycle events to make sure that Preston is at the heart of that activity. So I'd be interested to know what are we doing to make sure that we're not just a feature on the tour, the tour is a lasting legacy for our city.
Are you replying councillor Hindle? Yeah? No, are you replying leader? Yep.
Yeah, it is a very good point. Obviously, we will be thinking about it, we will be discussing about it. And I think we might get to a meeting, how about that? Cross-party agreement because, you know, in terms of things like this, it's not political points scoring, isn't it? It is a very important thing. So obviously councillor Coates is here today, but you've raised an excellent point and we'll take it forward and do what we can. Thank you.
Do you have a supplementary councillor, Ward? Thank you. Councillor Green, please. We're almost at the end now. Thank you. Councillor Green?
Thank you. I think this one will be for councillor Rollinson as well. So obviously, I'm aware the market traders have now been moved to the new site, the new home, and some traders feel marginalised that, and we've already lost a longstanding trader already, unfortunately. What has been put in place to mitigate market traders' problems that they may face until spring 2027? Thank you.
So the arrangement is not ideal, I agree. But because it's so close to where they normally trade, obviously people will easily find them. They have, it is temporary, of course. It's unavoidable. If you look at the site where the Amanda and his house project, it's a one chance here to renovate a derelict building of 30 years with £5 million of government cash. We cannot turn that down. Once that compound is built, it'll be way too close to where the traders trade. The vehicle access would be very poor and not safe from anywhere else. So we really had no choice for the safety of the traders. I know they've asked for some rent free period. I had already emailed the officers before they asked. I did ask for something bigger. It was quite a large amount of money, but we are definitely doing something for them and they will be informed quite soon. But obviously, we hope they stick with us and that the outdoor market comes out the other end and thrives.
Do you have a supplementary councillor, Green?
Yes, please. Thank you for that. So yeah, we see new traders, we know where they've been moved to. They are somewhat open to the elements as well. Is there a timeframe for them to have sort of any temporary shelter or gazebos, whatever that might be? Is there a timeframe for them to have sort of any temporary shelter or gazebos, whatever that may be in place, obviously with the winter weather coming? And has there been any meetings with LCC organised with regards to, obviously, you mentioned the traffic issues where they would normally load and unload? Have we got any of that sort of timeframe for that, please? Thank you.
We need to keep talking to them. We need to keep looking at it and tweaking it and make any improvements that we can. We're already aware of some issues and I think it was always going to be that way. And some some of them we may be able to resolve and improve and some maybe not. But, I mean, the last few days, last couple of days, they've been there trading and we appreciate that. And it could actually increase footfall to some of the other businesses nearby. We need to see how it goes. It's very early days, but we will keep talking and keep trying to make improvements.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wise, I had your name written on my pad, but I wasn't sure I've got that correct. Did you want to ask a question or not? No. No, it's okay. You're not, it's probably my mistake. So I think that brings us to the end. I know you. It brings us to the end of question time. Thank you for that. So we can move on now to item six, which is the return of councillor elected at the recent by-election. And can we note the information, please? And can we also note that Councilor Hodgson isn't here today? Because it's his graduation, so he will be at the December meeting and speaking there. Thank you. Item seven is a report on phase four of Making Homes From Houses. Now, I did have Councilor Cooplin down for moving this report, so who's leading this report? Leader, is that you?
Indeed, I will do this. Councilor Cooplin, we can't be here today, Madam Mayor. This is something, I think the council is used to this project. We've done it for many years. It's been going since two thousand and eighteen. In a nutshell, the Making Homes From Houses project is bringing empty homes back into use. There's been fifty three that have been brought back across Preston. It's a very, very successful project. We're now heading to the end of phase three. The partner that's delivered the scheme so far has been Community Gateway Association. In a nutshell, what happens is we use commuted sums from planning applications through the section one or six contributions for affordable housing. The council provides twenty thousand to fifty five thousand to help with the purchase of renovation costs. And then we work with the registered providers to bring the homes back into use. It's won awards, this scheme, so it's been highly successful. But the contract for phase three is expected to be delivered by March twenty twenty six. So we therefore need to go out to a competitive tendering process in advance of this date for the scheme to continue. Now, obviously, this will be an open competition process, so it could be Community Gateway is successful in that bid or it could be another provider. So the recommendations are at paragraph four point one point two. So I'm happy to put this to the chamber and I hope everyone will support it. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Have you got a second for that item, please? Councilwoman Wise, thank you. Are there any amendments to the item, please? Does anybody wish to speak on the item? Councilor Duke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just on the five point five point one, the almost the last bullet point. You do give reference that you will be asking the successful provider to demonstrate its commitment to achieving net zero. I just wondered, given that our county council reform colleagues are hell bent on saying that net zero is a middle class flip flop cultist fantasy. I think they came up with on Thursday, on Tuesday even. I just wondered if we could reinforce how important it is to get as much of a commitment as possible through the providers on this item. Thank you.
It's an excellent point you make. It is the working classes that tend to suffer more from air pollution and the our environment going downhill. That is the reality of it. The people in the more rural prosperous areas, they tend to be about a lot more. So yes, we will make that that push going forward. We also said, Madam Mayor, we want to look at whether we can use the Brookfield retrofit cooperative for some of this work. So that'll be explored as well. So if you could make an amendment to that effect, that would be helpful because we did decide that our neighbour group, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councilor Henshaw, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Okay, I just wanted to support this this motion, especially in particular the climate impact statement. With the climate jury, we did do an awful lot of work on housing and on bringing empty homes back into use. And this really does tick that box. So yeah, I'm very happy to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? Can I just clarify, Councilor Brown? Did you were you moving amendment then to include something extra in the report?
Yeah, possible. This was just a discussion at group. I think I did mention it to our officers. We do have a worker cooperative that's in Brookfield, which does retrofitting. So we'd want that to be considered as part of the work for any successful contractor. So if that can be brought into brought in as amendment, that'd be really helpful, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
And is that seconded? Yeah, thank you. Leave the wording. Yep.
We need to adjourn if it's to be a formal amendment.
Right, we'll just adjourn for a quick five minutes then, while we come up with the official wording.
Okay, thank you.
We can adjourn in the chamber unless you really want to have a quick comfort break. We can stay here if you wish. I have no intention of running away.
Right, everybody, can everybody just get back to the seats please? Thank you. Ice cream and popcorn will be served shortly. Right, thank you everybody. We'll now resume. I understand the leader's going to make an amendment to the decision required under 2.11 and 2.12. 2.12, thank you.
Thank you much, Madam Mayor, sorry for the slight delay. Yes, so obviously we've taken legal advice. Obviously, what our Labour group would like to see happen, obviously does need to be transpired into illegal form of words, which obviously will obviously make the thing watertight. So the amendment for 2.13 is we request the Director of Development and Housing to encourage that tenders maximise social and environmental values, including working with suitable qualified cooperative social and community sector organisations through the procurement process. That will obviously make sure that the tendering is obviously done in a fair way. So obviously, we do want to encourage the likes of Townschocks Brookfield, but obviously what we're not saying is that they don't have to go through a competitive process. Of course they do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Wise, are you seconding that amendment? Does anybody want an alternative amendment? No? Anyone who wants to speak on this? Councillor Otter?
Just a quick question.
Yeah, can you stand for me?
Thank you, Madam. Just to be absolutely clear, you're not now nominating a particular organisation. It's a general consider some approaches.
We're making a general principle about our desire for cooperatives that we've supported, through external funding even, to actually potentially have an opportunity to do this work. Obviously, we can't dictate it, but we can use the general set of rules, certainly.
Thank you. That clarifies. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're now going to move this report with alteration, as just read out by the leader. So if nobody else wishes to speak, can we now all vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Thank you. Item eight is a report on the fees policy for the licensing of residential park home sites. Leader, are you going to be moving this one, please?
Thank you very much. In the absence of councillor Coopland, it is me again. Thank you. This is a new requirement for full council to licence caravan sites where the holiday or long term residential use, to ensure there is a decent standard for the sites. It is mandatory for us to licence these sites anyway, and the council must approve and have a published fees policy. We actually don't have many caravan sites in Preston sadly, but I think we do have one or two, so it will apply to these sites that will be covered by it. So the proposal is, first fees at paragraph 4.2.2, they're not huge, but obviously we do need those fees to ensure our housing standards, people go around and support these caravan sites and ensure that they're a reasonable standard. So the decision is to approve the fees and charges at paragraph 4.2, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Is that seconded, please? Councillor Wise, thank you. Any amendments to this item, please? Does anybody wish to speak on this item? No. Can we move to the vote then, please? All those in favour, please show your hands. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Thank you. Item nine is a report on the cost of living support for the financially vulnerable. Councillor Brown, are you moving this report, please?
Madam Mayor, yes, I will do. Thank you very much. And everyone is really proud on this side of the chamber about what we're going to do in the next 10 or 15 or 20 minutes. We do hope we'll have support across the chamber. Maybe not, maybe will, maybe won't, but obviously we have the numbers today to get this through. So we're delighted to put forward this radical intervention and comprehensive report to tackle the cost of living. Before I do start, I want to thank my members for supporting this, because we did have a healthy debate about how we'd like to do this. And I'd also like to thank Sarah Thrill for coming up with some brilliant ideas about how it makes happen, and Office of Team more generally. Obviously, due to council rulings, we do have a favourable financial position. We have a large set of reserves, so we can focus on our priorities as a radical Labour council that wishes to reduce poverty and redistribute wealth in our community as far as we can. So the package is worth £800,000 to £5,000,000, and it comes from our reserves, which are pretty healthy, about £16 million at this moment in time. Obviously, we obviously don't want them all to go over to the new council, we want to spend pragmatically as much of them as we can while we're still here to do good for our community. So for many years, Preston's Labour councils prioritised how to make Preston a more equal place, whether that's been the first to pay and promote the real living wage, as we heard today from councillor Wise, or surpassing every other council in Lancashire in recent years for new socially affordable homes, or supporting dozens of food hubs, or supporting cosy homes in Lancashire, or the recent decision to ensure the least well off are exempt from council tax. Much of this does link with our community wealth building strategy, which seeks to have a fairer and more inclusive economy by expanding the numbers of democratically owned businesses like cooperatives. However, whilst this is deepening, we also need to deal with the immediacy of what has happened in many of our communities. The reality is that our community in Preston has been through a failed neoliberal experiment since the Thatcher years of 1980 onwards, which has seen inequalities rise and huge chunks of public wealth of our country sold off, outsourcing, deregulation and attacks on trading and rights. The legacy still lives on in our working class communities here in Preston who want to do more to tackle it. So the comprehensive package in front of you does several things. We're trying to redistribute wealth as much as we can to those who are less well off. So firstly, and I'll go through all nine because I think they're all amazing items. Firstly, we will provide free swimming for young people, pensioners, those with disabilities and those on low incomes. Now, currently, a concessory swim is currently costing £5.20, so this will go a long way to making our health, our communities more active and healthier by having free access to swimming pools through Greenwich Leisure, which is one of our partners, and again, thank councillor Coopland for that. Another thing which is universal as well, and I also want to thank councillor Hindle for coming up with this, actually, through what was happening in Manchester Labour Council. So if there's any individual in our communities who has a terminal illness, we'll waive the right for them to pay council tax for a year. So whatever the income, whatever the wealth, if someone is going through that trauma of terminal illness, they won't have to pay council tax, and we'll cover that subsidy, which will be £45,000. Thirdly, we're going to use our House of Support Fund, and this is something we're very excited about, is we're going to offer payments of between £50 and £400 at Christmas for families affected by the various benefit caps. Now, the reality, and this is a reality in Preston, there are some families through various cuts to benefits in recent 10, last 10 or 15 years that are losing over £200 a week, £200 a week. And obviously, we welcome the Labour Government's indication that the two benefit child cap will be removed, we expect, at some point in the next few months. However, the damage has still been done. Those families have been badly damaged by decisions by Conservative politicians. So this will go some way to alleviating poverty, especially at Christmas. And £400 for a family that are losing £200 or more a week, to that family, that's a huge amount of wealth for them. You know, we've got to identify those people and make sure we support them with those payments. And obviously, if they're losing £100 or up to £50 a week, there'll be lower payments as well. Fourthly, our pensioners, we know that many pensioners are suffering poverty, so we're going to be providing through HSF payments up to £100 for low income pensioners. And this will cover up to 800 households in Preston. This will focus on pensions on council tax support but not pension credits. So these are basically poorer pensioners who last year were just above, we believe, the threshold to receive pension credit. Also, £50,000 to support low income young people and unpaid parents for those struggling, the cost of living, transport, food, housing and clothing costs. We're going to put an extra £45,000 towards local food hubs. Obviously, we want to pay tribute to councillor Cal for the work she did in the portfolio. Now, pay it to councillor Kelly to set those up. But also £20,000 towards essential household goods and furniture. The disabled facilities grant has run out already from this government, so we're going to put £100,000 for discretionary housing payments further to ensure, sorry, for disability facilities grants, so disabled people can remain in their homes independently, as the statutory funding has been oversubscribed. And a top up of £100,000 for discretionary housing payments to ensure more people avoid homelessness and remain in their homes. And then also our voluntary sector, they do amazing work to tackle poverty. You know, without them, poverty rates in this city would be a lot worse. So we're putting an extra £100,000 for community grants, working in the voluntary sector to tackle poverty and build resilience in the most deprived communities. And then we're going to have a £70,000 piece of work to research how in the long term this council can effectively reduce child poverty, economic activity and provide opportunities to break free of poverty. Because if you look at the trends in terms of child poverty rising, we've actually been, it has gone up in the last 10 years, but we've actually done better than most. Out of six or seven councils with a similar rate back in 2015, our child poverty rates have gone up a lot less. But obviously, we want to make sure we can bring them down if it's all possible. So obviously, we're very proud of this. It's going to make a huge difference to some people in our community, many people whose voices are not heard often because they are in poverty. And people who suffer poverty, in the mind, the lives chances they have, you know, there's actually evidence to say that when people are poor, the brain shrinks because all the opportunities you have to actually think positively go away, you know, and they become more depressed, more isolated. So we want to reach out to those people and make sure we can help them in terms of those struggling, and obviously offer some payments, especially to families that are suffering severe poverty within our communities. So it's a mixture of both universal support, as in free swimming and obviously exemptions for those who might have a terminal illness, but targeted redistributive measures to target those who are the least well off. We're going to work with all our community organisations, charities, faith organisations, unions, others, the community sector, to make sure we get this money to the people who need it. So I'm delighted to put this forward. For me, this is what our Labour council's about. It's about trying to do things like this to make sure that those who are suffering at the lower end of society economically actually have some, their lives improved just a little bit by what we're doing. So happy to move this. Madam Mayor, thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we got a second for that report, please? Councillor Wise, thank you. Have we got any amendments to this report, please? Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Potter first, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our group will obviously be supporting this. There's lots of worthy things in there. There were several areas we had questions about, and we just wanted to be shoring up that, because now that Liberal Democrats represent 44% of this city, we actually have lots of areas of deprivation in our areas that our councils represent. And we wanted to make sure that the proper processes were in place, that various community groups from all those areas, whether it's the Plungeyton Park of Cadley, Ingle, Tantum and Larches, wherever that may be, all have equal and fair opportunities to get to some of these funding pots. I will say, like I say, we are going to support this, but, and you've talked about the two child cap, what does scream out of this report is just how badly let down people have been from the Labour Government over the last 18 months as well. You shouldn't have to do this stuff. And when Keir Starmer was elected on change, I doubt you're expecting you are going to have to deliver this change and not a Labour Government. And I'm sure you're bitterly disappointed with our two Labour MPs that represent the city, who on the most part have toed the party line rather than what you believe and what the people of this city need. So we'll be supporting this, and we look forward to the budget in February when we can put forward our ideas of how we might improve the city with the money that now we have available. Thank you.
Councillor Duke, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's more of a practical point about the free swimming. It's brilliant that there's going to be some free swimming for children across the city, but just from a practical viewpoint, how are you going to ensure that kids don't turn up expecting to swim without any money on them and they're told that all the free swims have gone? You need to be able to warn people that free swim's over for this month. So how are you going to do that so we don't have disappointed residents, particularly children?
Do you want to take the questions at the end, councillor Brown? I will bring in councillor Peak. I've got next, please. I've got a couple of few hands up. Thank you.
I will support this, but I have a point that I am a pensioner and I do use swimming as a form of exercise. So I've just realised that I should actually declare an interest. I want to be absolutely correct, open and transparent. So I need to take advice on whether I am allowed to vote on this.
Hands up, everyone who can swim.
Who's of pensionable age or a child.
We're just taking some advice, councillor Peak, so I will come back to you shortly. Just for the information, I can't swim. You just need to declare a personal interest, councillor Peak, that's all, but not prejudicial. Thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Actar, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to put on record my genuine appreciation for the fact that this motion has come to us today. Too often in politics, and you know, people looking around the city think that we just are in it for ourselves. And that's never really, I mean, sometimes I disagree with my own group, and that's okay, because that's healthy in a democracy. But one thing that's never been in doubt is the absolute commitment to lifting up those and supporting those and offering, reaching out to those who have the least and who have the greatest need. Because there's a significant unmet duty of care to residents in cities. Because there's a significant unmet duty of care to residents in cities and towns and urban and rural areas right across the country. And one thing I really appreciate and I commend Matthew and others who've worked in offices indeed as well, who've really thought about how we reach out and, you know, to someone else's point about is it's just going to be in some areas? No. We've had conversations about rural poverty, we've had conversations about hidden urban poverty, we've had conversations about inequalities within affluent communities and so forth. So I think there's so much in here for so many different groups of people in the city. It's not just about, you know, reallocating resource across city, but it's also, I think, important to recognise that how have we got to a position where we have got that resource in the times that we are in? And it's because of careful management of the resources. I don't often credit my friend councillor Wrighton Rawlinson, but, you know, he's done a good job. And I think we need to recognise where there has been, you know, good work done and the benefits that we've managed to achieve. Oh, he's happy. The benefits that we've managed to achieve as a consequence for our city. And I hope the people of Preston, you know, will recognise and continue working with us to make sure that those who are not always able to advocate for themselves to be able to access the resources that they need are able to come up and get the support that they need. There is a motion coming into December, I won't preview it, but it is about end of life care and how people with great need often are unable to access that care because they can't advocate for themselves or they're too unwell to do so. And I hope that this journey is part of that process of helping correct some of those inequalities that do exist and are hidden. Thank you, Matthew Coe.
Thank you, councillor Actar. Councillor Landlis, I've got you next, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, believe it or not, we as caring authorities actually will be supporting this. It's a useful report, the recommendations that we quite happily take on board because John says he represents 40% of the city. We don't represent such a high percentage part of the city anymore, but we represent mainly the rural communities. And, you know, poverty and problems, like is mentioned in the report, does happen in the rural communities as well. And I've just safely say we take pleasure in supporting this.
Thank you, councillor Landlis. Councillor Rawlinson, please.
Just like to see how much work has gone into this, the officers and councillors who led on it. Obviously, that was in the meetings and there was so much discussion between ourselves and the officers. And then it went to group, we had a special group meeting. Because, you know, you could talk about this stuff forever and you could do so many different things. And we needed things that were deliverable quite quickly and easily. Some of this stuff is not that easy to deliver and I didn't think we could do it, but the officers are doing it and we're really grateful. It's amazing stuff. In terms of, you know, the Labour Government, who have been mentioned, they've been in 12 months, it's going to take a lot more than 12 months to fix the damage of 15 years of austerity supported by the Liberal Democrats, who'd not once voted against it in this chamber in 15 years. That, actually, you will never fix that damage. In fact, it will, you know, it's damaged generation after generation and life expectancy is expected to shorten. Hundreds of thousands of people died early because of austerity. So let's not talk about the Labour Government just yet, shall we?
Councillor Little.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, just a quick sort of technical point. I welcome pretty much everything in this and I want to have the maximum impact that we can, specifically when we're looking at the swimming. Now, my children both swim. We were fortunate enough, we go to Penwith unfortunately, forward was just a little bit out of the way, and they do swim club as well for Preston Swimming. But from my experience of the pools, some of them are actually quite hard to get to specifically at times of the day that you'll want to be using them with children. I understand the area of Preston and some of the children, different areas might not actually be able to access swimming. So hopefully we can put a fine place to get as many of those children involved as we possibly can. And potentially, if we could just monitor the uptake and see how successful it is in different areas, it might be good for us going forward. If we do this again, hopefully, we can grow it to more successful. Thank you.
Councillor Wise, you seconded the report. Do you want to come in and speak?
Yes, please. Yeah, I just want to say, this is the, this is the start. And when we're obviously in our budget working group, we'll be looking at what we want to put in the budget for next year. And we can be learning lessons from how this has been implemented, whether certain things have, we've had an over demand and other things under demand. So this is like a start. This is not just a one off. Just wanted to say that. And yeah, I fully support it, obviously.
Councillor Brown, as you move the report, you've got a right to reply. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure what the before and position on this is, but we'll see soon. But it is, it is good that we have you and Minnis for across the chamber. And obviously, Stephen, you want one of the odd one out, I'm sure. So, okay, so in terms of some of the technical things, they are actually very good questions. Thank you very much. In terms of the free swimming, we're going to monitor that. So we will know from GLL when the swims are going to run out. And as Valerie said, we hope to do this beyond when it ends at the end of March, continue it for as long as we can. So that's the first question. In terms of what you said, Sean, yeah, we'll look into that, obviously. You make a very good point. We've not thought about that to that degree, but you do make a very good point. However, there are lots of kids who are swimming at this moment in time, at the times that are available within GLL leisure centres already. And again, I'll get more details. I don't know yet whether it's going to be on off peak times or whether it's just any time, but obviously, we'll find that out for you. And just one final thing is that I was contacted this morning by the Marry Currie Cancer Centre, just praising the fact that Preston Council's doing this. And everybody who votes for this today, regardless of party, mass clubs, you should be proud of yourselves. Because, you know, the fact we're doing this for terminial households, the fact we're doing this for children in poverty, the fact we're doing it for elderly pensioners in poverty, the fact we are giving kids in poorer areas the opportunity to swim for free, which obviously is good for the health as well. You know, I just think it's an amazing thing. So I just really want to pray tribute to everyone who does actually vote for it today. So happy to recommend this to the Chamber, Madam Mayor. You know, this stuff is good for our soul, I think, the fact we're uplifting some of the poorest residents and doing things that are positive for everyone. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Right, can we now vote on this item, please? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That item's carried. Thank you. Item 10 is a report on funded budget increase of asylum dispersal funding for 2526. Councillor Kelly, will you be moving this report, please?
Which one was it again? I've got a few. So this is the funded increase of the asylum dispersal funding, yes. Thank you. There you go. This report is to highlight the acceptance of £451,200 to be used in support of the asylum seekers that we have in the city. And the decision that was required is 2.1.1. There's several things in there, I'm sure you've all read. So I move that we accept this. And yeah, there you go. Make it quick as possible.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Is that seconded, please? Councillor Crowe, thank you. Are there any amendments, first of all, on the item? No. Councillor Thompson, you wish to speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. We can't really refuse this. If someone's giving you money, you don't say nothing, do you? And the way the thing actually works, the system, is we've been given this responsibility to do this. But can I have some report going forward in the future from one of the Cabinet, a report on what actually is being spent on this, how it's being spent? And how many refugees do we have in the city? Because every time I seem to ask, I get different figures. So I would like it to be transparent, please, if we can. Thank you.
Second, councillor Kelly, I'll bring you back in in a minute. I just want to check if anybody else has got questions. And then councillor Crowe has a right to speak as well as a second. Anybody else got any questions? No. So councillor Crowe, do you wish to speak on this at all? Okay, thank you. Councillor Kelly, I'll bring you back in now to write a reply.
Yes, I'm sure you're very busy with your new role, but you'll find that the figures are actually in the report of how it's been, of how it's being used. And I'm happy to have a conversation with you about it. Thank you very much. Page 25, I've been told by my learned colleague here.
Right, can we all vote on this item, please? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Can you put your hand down, councillor Kelly? You can't vote three times on three things. That's carried. Thank you. Item 11 is the Report on Rough Sleeping Prevention and Recovery Grant Top Up Funding. Councillor Kelly, will you be moving this report, please?
I will be indeed. This report is to accept from MHCLG grant funding of £541,313 to it and approve a revenue funded budget increase above the use. So this is really to assist our homeless people on the pathway out of homelessness into, into permanent accommodation. I had an opportunity last week to go out with the outreach team. And I'd really recommend it because what we, what we do with these, with our outreach workers is they just, they know all the people who sleep in rough. We take them and have a conversation. Tea's very popular in the morning as well. I went out at eight o'clock. But I just, these are people and they are people that we need to support. And that's what we're, what we're here to, and this additional money will, will help us to do that. And we, as we continue to get people off the streets and get them into, into accommodation. And that being in an accommodation can absolutely change the course of that person's life. So this is something we have to continue to support and promote. So if we could, that'd be fine. I'm not going to say short or anything else. I'm just going to sit down.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. I've got a second for that report. Councillor Bailey, thank you for that. Are there any amendments? Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Councillor Bailey, do you want to say anything before I bring back to the vote? Councillor Kelly, you don't need to say anything else now. Thank you. So we can, we can move to the vote, please, if that's okay? Or show hands, please. Thank you. And then anybody against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Thank you. No, not quite. Another item. Sorry. Midyear Financial Strategy Update 2526. Item 12 is a report on this. It was unavailable at the time the agenda was published, as officers, officers had to ensure that all the financial data provided was the latest up to date information. And this includes a recently announced Pride in Place funding, seeking approval of the memorandum of understanding. I'm therefore accepting this report as an urgent one, as council needs to be updated on the council's midyear financial position. Councillor Rawlinson, will you be moving this report, please?
Thank you. As you've just said, this is usually a report for noting forecast update, but there are a couple of items we need to approve, which is setting aside £1 million for local government reorganisation. We don't know if that will be enough, but that's the advice we're getting. And also, accept this memorandum of understanding for the new Pride in Place cash that the city's getting from the Labour Government. And there is an error in the report, I was supposed to point out. Supplementary agenda for item 12, page 15, table 3, all the forecast issues should be 0.589 million and latest estimate should be 26.972 million. So that is page 15, table 3. So as you can see, this is our best financial position for probably 20 years in finance. It's taken me 20 years, but, but obviously, we're in a, I keep doing that, we're in a better position than we have been for quite some time. That doesn't mean we're awash with money, unfortunately. The revenue budget is showing as just about balanced. We've included some extra support grant from the government, but not, not as much as we're hoping we might get. The consultation suggests we're going to do well out of it. But the councillors that are not going to do so well out of it are obviously lobbying government to, to not let that happen. But so we'll have to see what happens. So we can't count our chickens, but we are hoping for a revenue surplus in February, that we can spend some of it or all of it. But, and obviously, we've got the, the high reserves, which has been our policy throughout the government cuts since 2011, to keep high reserves and try not to make as many cuts as we have to. We've been running a deficit most years since 2011 on the revenue forecast, but we've had the reserves and we've had contingency plans so that we don't have to cut things like advice services and homelessness services and other things, that some things that we've kept going that other councils have cut completely. So obviously, we're very pleased with the position and there are, some of it is, you know, good management. I think the policy of the high reserves has borne out. But things have happened, especially over the last few years, that have certainly helped us. And obviously, the house building, the increase in council tax, city deal extension. We've got some extra business rates growth, which is significant, £2 million. Because of the reserves, we haven't had to borrow for animate yet. That is, again, significant amounts of money that we're not paying out in interest at this time. We, we are expecting to increase the pay award because of inflation. And the unions obviously go into demand more, quite rightly. There are, obviously, today, we've had that report on the cost of living, the anti-poverty stuff, which is over 3% of our annual budget that is in that report that, that we want to use to help people with. So it's a significant amount, that's not in the forecast. There's, there's other things coming forward that we've got planned that are not in the forecast. So we are not awash with money by any means. But as councillor Brown said, you know, we don't want to send £15 million to a new council. We, you know, we want to stay within the limits that the auditors set us, if possible. But we want to do good things with it if we can. And that, that's what we'll be doing.
Thank you, councillor Rawlinson. Is that seconded, please? Councillor Wise, thank you. Are there any amendments? Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Do you want to come in, councillor Wise? So we'll vote on this item, but this is with the minor alteration as raised by councillor Rawlinson. So all those in favour, please show. Thank you. Any abstentions? Anybody against? No, thank you. Item 14 is a report on the review of the political balance. This item was marked to follow on the agenda as the outcome of the recent by-election was unknown at the time the agenda was published. I'm accepting the report as an urgent one in order that the council may continue to operate its committees with the correct political balance which reflects the democratic makeup of the council. Councillor Rawlinson, will you be moving this report with alteration?
We'll move it. I was going to withdraw it. Obviously, it's now out of date already overnight. And I read it as if we'd given a seat on scrutiny to reform, but when I look at the table today, it doesn't say that at all. So I probably wasn't wearing my glasses or something, but it's right next to it on the, on the table. So, so we are going to let it go through. But obviously, it's going to change at the next council again, anyway. So it's, it will only stand for two months. And we're talking about minor, you know, changes to the formula. So we'll let it go through, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Rawlinson. Is that seconded? Councillor Brown, thank you. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Councillor Henshaw, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Potter, I don't quite understand. You said 40%. You said the Lib Dems make up 40%. But not of the city council. Of the city council, you're only 31%. Okay, that's, that's fine. Well, I'm glad I've established that. But 31% of planning committee, right, is, is actually 3.4 places. And obviously, you can't have 0.4 of a person. So I appreciate that you're rounding up to give you a fourth seat. But if that fourth seat is going to be another fella, then I'm sorry, but I think you need to consider the gender balance because the planning committee is currently eight because the planning committee is currently eight men and three women. And if you're going to make it, sorry, is currently seven men and four women. But if you're going to make it eight men and three women, I just think you should put a bit of weight on the gender balance as opposed to rounding up to suit the Lib Dems. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Carol Henshaw. I understand that it's done on political balance, not on gender balance. So it's up to individual political parties to nominate places. And if they have chosen their members to represent them, then that's the case, I'm afraid. Where are we up to?
Sorry.
Anybody else? Sorry, did you wish to come back?
Can I come back?
Sure, I'll let you.
Just because it's not even half a person, it's 0.4 of a person. And I therefore think that in this instance, you should look at the gender balance as opposed to the size of the group. And it's just, it's a point for record that I can see Adrian shaking his head. But I just don't think that's fair. Thanks.
Yeah, I think I've just said that it can't be done on gender balance. It's done on political balance. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? Councillor Brown, do you want to come back on this at all before we go to the vote? Is it Martin? Sorry, it's Martin, sorry.
Well, I think councillor Henshaw makes good points. And if we started imposing gender balances, Fiona and Julie are going to be very, very busy, aren't they, on the Liberal Democrat group? You know. It's interesting, the numbers, you know, this is what the Lib Dems put in their leaflets, 40%. They've got 14 councils out of 48. And yet, according to the press this week, they're taking over the council very soon with just over a quarter of the councillors, of course. So that's ridiculous. But unless they're going to get into bed with reform, that wouldn't surprise me. But let's hope not.
Right, can we move to the vote now, please, on this item? Can all those in favour, please show? Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. I'm now going to take a short, short is the word, break. No, we're going to have a short break now, thank you, for 15 minutes at the maximum. But we'll say 10 past four, which gives you enough time. Thank you.
Yeah, they would know they were being talked. You want me to look?
Thank you, please be seated. Right, so now we're on item fourteen, which is notification of changes to the membership of committees. So are there any changes to be reported? councillor Brown first please, thank you.
Thank you, madam. Obviously, we had just some changes. Obviously, there's been an unexpected political developments, which obviously we need to respond to. So obviously, in light of what we need to do with our rulebook around having female gender balance, the new chair of standards will be Pat Varty. In terms of taxi and subcommittee, Liz Atkins will come off, and obviously Liz Atkins will come off chair standards as well, and Connor will go on as a sub. In terms of planning sub, Liz Atkins will go off, and Valerie will go on as well. Then in terms of mental health champion, again, in terms of the female gender balance, Lynne Brooks will be the mental health champion. So that's it for those. Thank you. Also, and press relief in need, we have Naweeda will go on, and Liz Atkins will go off. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Potter, please.
Thank you, madam. Very quickly from us, I think due to the rejigging of the political balance, we have to lose one from licensing, and that will be myself. I will come on.
Councillor Landlis, have you got anything to report? Sorry.
It had already been sorted that councillor Rutter was going on to planning, but I'll just defer to that, yeah.
Are you the same councillor, Landlis? Have you sorted yours prior with the officer?
Well, I'll be delighted to read him out, because mine are a bit more substantial due to slight changes in the... So I'll sort of read the team out, should I? Overview and scrutiny, councillor possibly pleased to know it could be me. Audit will be councillor Stephen Witten. Planning sub will be councillor Green, replacing councillor Thompson. Central Lancashire JAC will be councillor Landlis, replacing councillor Thompson. Guild committee will be councillor Green, replacing councillor Thompson, and member development steering group will be councillor Bell. And that's our changes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Landlis. Councillor Brown, I understand with the guild committee, you probably need to inform who's coming off the guild committee. Thank you.
Yeah, I missed that. It's councillor Phil Crowe. He'll come off, thank you.
Thank you. Right, item fifteen is the notice of motion on the Lancashire Pension Fund ethical investment, which has been submitted by councillor Brooks. Councillor Brooks, will you be moving your motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak on this motion. As we all know, today's world is a dangerous and exploitive place. Global conflict, terrorism, and the threat to our precious planet, the climate change, and many other devastating effects are man-made. And they face it every day. Things happen that we, again, astound us, but it just keeps happening. These man-made events, they're driven by greed to generate more wealth for the few at the expense of the many. There is a well-known saying that money is the root of all evil, and if you look carefully, it does seem to ring true. These tragic events have indirect and direct consequences on all of us, both socially, emotionally, economically, politically, and historically. In Preston, we're not perfect, but we do strive to be inclusive, diverse, and tolerant of others. And we believe, as we've shown today in all the motions passed on helping people in poverty, that we believe in sharing through community wealth building, and we share major city assets which are being owned by the people, for the people of Preston. So Preston Authority contributes to the Lancashire Pension Fund, which is a substantial amount of wealth. It is our view that the fund should reflect our city values and be used to promote peaceful and climate protective measures, and not be used to further or contribute to human right abuses, breaches of international law, or environmental harm. To achieve this, it's absolutely imperative that the fund realigns its investment strategy with the values of our communities and the principles of international law. These funds should support both long-term financial security and have respect for international legal standards. Preston City Council therefore calls for the Lancashire Pension Fund to take forward at its earliest opportunity a commitment to ethical investment and global responsibility, reflecting the principles of international law. This motion asks that the Lancashire Pension Fund consider taking the following actions. These actions are to develop a clear plan that will actually help to make this go into fruition. So we want to develop a clear and time-bound plan to divest from companies involved in arms production or the supply of weapons to regimes, terrorist organisations, or extreme groups engaged in breaches of international law and human rights abuse. Implement robust and transparent reporting mechanisms, including the annual disclosure of any investment in armaments and weapon manufacturers, companies operating in occupied territories as defined by international law, progress on the de-investment efforts, and outcomes of any corporate engagement strategies. We also want to explore alternative ethical and environmental investment opportunities. This can include, but not the whole list is limited to, supporting Lancashire companies, local growth initiatives, renewable energy, social housing, and sustainable infrastructure, and the North West Mutual Bank. We do recognise that the Lancashire Pension Fund is for almost looking after its members' interests. This duty is paramount, and it's, you know, it's got concerns that we know it has to protect all its members' interests. But this doesn't need to come, albeit odds with the motion as he spells it out. It's increasingly accepted that careful consideration and ethical investment strategies remain financially strong and sustainable. And I think this is, you know, that's in the news, and easy to find, that it's the only way to go forward. Preston City Council appreciates that this would mean Lancashire Pension Fund would have to make a change. But Preston Council believe this is both a moral, financial imperative, but simply it's just the right thing to do. So far from making money the root of all evil, we as Preston have shown many times, we can use the money and the wealth and put it to good use, so it's got, you know, ethical connections and help people. So I hope you can support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Boxer, that's seconded, please. Councillor Wise.
Yeah, I'm happy to second this motion. I know there was a discussion I had with officers about what Lancashire County Pension Fund already does, and I've actually looked at their responsible investment policy, and it does mention human rights in it, and also local investment and affordable housing, which is all obviously excellent. But my understanding is that they are still using some of the funds, investing some of them in places that are occupied. So obviously, we're totally posed to any funds being, for example, being used in Ukraine, the same as funds being used currently in Israel with what is going on, where the UN does actually see that genocide is taking place. I know that we say in the motion that obviously there is a fiduciary duty to ensure that, you know, you get maximum return. But what has been shown now with ethical investments, that financial returns, that ethical investments can perform comparably to traditional investments. For instance, the Ethical Investment Growth Portfolio Report reported a return of plus 12.05% for the full year despite facing market challenges. So in other words, we're not like wanting to put people's pensions at risk, but you can actually, pension funds can ethically invest in appropriate things. And many ethical funds report on their contributions to social and environmental goals, providing transparency on how investments align with ethical standards. So I think it's really important to recognise, and I know more and more people with their own private pensions. I've looked at my own private pension. I haven't got a Lancashire, I haven't got a voluntary pension, but I've got some pension from actually working in the voluntary sector. And when I've now taken control of it, I've made sure now I'm only having ethical investments. And I think it's something that morally we should all be doing, quite honestly, and not in having investment in arms manufacture and stuff like that. So I just think that this is morally correct, but actually financially is not a risk that we're suggesting needs to be taking place. So I'm happy to second this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not aware of any amendments, but we'll now ask who wants to speak. Councillor Thompson, I saw your hand first, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I don't have any problem with ethical investments. I think when I've made investments, it does say you can have an ethical investment or not. You can tick the box to do either. And the industry has a set of ethical parameters that it goes by. But with this, you want to specifically pick particular things that you're not happy that the pension fund is investing in. And from what you've said, I think the headline is Preston City Council don't want to invest in BA systems, which is a major employer in this area. And in fact, I think the union might have something to say about that. But, and you should follow sound advice, the pension system is there for the pensioners. And if you want to make it ethical, that's fine. As I said, there's a box to tick. But you're actually setting up your own parameters here. And when you mentioned genocide in Israel, which is your second person to do that, is that's not necessarily been agreed by everybody, that that's one. And I would suggest that, you know, Israel isn't the only country to say that they are not committing genocide. Turkey has said it didn't commit genocide in 1915, and that was plainly a lot worse than what's happened in Gaza over the last few, over the last few years. So, yeah, fine, have an ethical policy, but it's got to be decided by, one of the, that's decided by the pensions professionals, and not just something that you've picked up here in the town hall. So I can't support this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Gregg, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to ask if you've had a look to see if you can find out any companies that they, or the portfolios they do invest in. And you mentioned disputed territories. We know some European countries dispute Gibraltar and the Falklands. Would those companies actually play a part in this? You've put in your motion here, these funds should support long-term financial security. And I'm just wondering whether putting pensions into a bank that isn't even a bank yet without a licence, whether that's financially secure long term. And, yeah, thank you.
I'll bring you in at the end, councillor Brooks, to answer any questions. Councillor Witten, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep this brief. On many occasions in this chamber, we agree across the political divide. As has been evidenced by today, we voted for a lot of stuff which is all about people of Preston. However, what we've clearly seen played out with this motion is the difference in political perspective, and that's what makes the world go round. For me, suggesting that we change our investment strategy, or LCC's pension fund changes their investment strategy at a time of political upheaval and economic upheaval, largely caused, I think, by our current chancellor, is a mistake. We have one of the biggest employers in Lancashire, supporting our defence industry, which is a world leader. There's no question about that. The pension fund job is to maximise its return on investment, simple as that, for each pensioners who pay into that fund. LCC Fund already has ethical and environmental controls. They're quite clear. Councillor Wise, you mentioned, said there that the ethical investments can perform, but we don't know whether they will or not. The fund in twenty-two, twenty-three was 115% in excess, at a surplus of 1,395 million. It was performing really well. Since the Chancellor's last budget, the number of lump sum withdrawals has increased significantly because people are worried about a potential raid on pensions in the next budget. Again, changing tack at this time would be wrong. And I note finally the suggestion that we might invest in the North West Bank, which is an option, which our group has opposed from day one. And so for that reason, unfortunately, councillor Brooks, I can't support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Witten. Councillor Sawal, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to say I fully support the motion. Our pension fund should never be linked to companies that supply weapons that harm civilians, that operate in ways that break international law. Communities, we've seen here in communities in Preston and other places in the UK and across the world, in fact, that, what impact this has had directly through families and friends abroad. And also the same goes for climate change as well. We shouldn't be investing in polluting industries because they undermine the very future pensions that they're meant to secure. We should also, sorry, we should also be backing housing and sustainable projects here in Lancashire. That's all. And just on councillor Thompson's point, Israel is committing a genocide. I mean, this government recently recognised that as well at the party conference. I mean, I'm happy to speak to you after the meeting, anywhere we can go through some stuff, but they are committing a genocide.
Councillor Henshaw, please.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say really briefly, I'm very happy to support this motion. I think morally, it's the right thing to do, and I don't think we need to think of anything else, really. Let's do what's right morally, and this is what's right morally. So, yeah, I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henshaw. Councillor Rollins, please.
This doesn't have to be controversial. We don't have to, you know, compare genocides. Who's got the biggest genocide? It's awful, isn't it? But we don't even have to talk about exactly where we shouldn't be invested and where we should be investing. We're not going to influence that. What we're talking about is a direction here, and we want the pension fund to do more of certain things. There's a pension fund in America that only invests in the locality. It's a big area. It's like a state pension fund, the current member which state it is now. But they've done it for decades, for hundreds of billions of pounds has been directed into the local economy. It can be done this. It really can be done, and it just needs the will. The pension fund is not a political body. So, you know, there's only so much we can do. But they can decide to do this. And, you know, probably it's And, you know, probably, it's probably the hardest time to ask them to do this with a reformed county council. But that pension fund is in a very good position financially right now. It's the best time for them to do this. Because if they did invest ethically and lost some money, they can afford to lose some money right now. Obviously, they don't want to lose money. They act on behalf of the pension fund holders. But they could do it. They could do this now, and they could do more of it. There's no question of it. It just needs the will, and it's a very good idea to ask them to do it.
Councillor Guyce, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I think for me, this is a case of a balance, where there's some things in the motion that I would quibble with, and some things that I would like to support. And on balance, we'll support it. And some things in the reasoning we've heard today that I'll quibble with as well. For example, money is not the root of all evil. There's plenty of other evils out there in the world. And not all arms manufacturing is an evil to be avoided. We'd be in a very precarious position if we disbanded our defence establishment and our armed forces and so on. It wouldn't be a world that I'd want to live in. I think it's worth pointing out that the motion says the city council asks that the Lancashire Pension Fund consider taking the following actions. The pension fund will consider investing in the North West Mutual Bank, and it will decide not to, if it has any sense. And therefore, there's no harm done in supporting this motion.
Councillor Potter, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you just check if the chaplain is available? Because I think I agree with most of what councillor Rollinson said. It's, I'm feeling some sort of exorcism or something might need to occur. But I, councillor Guyce has summed up a lot of that. There are some quibbles in this. But do we ultimately want more ethical banking? Yes, we do. Do we, do we want to be careful about where our money is invested in which companies? Yes, we do. I think councillor Witten's point about B A E is perfectly well made. We're in an area of the country that relies on the defence industry, but that doesn't mean the defence industry is evil in itself. I think the people of Ukraine will be very thankful for what Britain has given to them to help them defend against tyranny. And so it is how those investments are done. So it's not black or white, but this steps in the right direction. And I, again, councillor Guyce has talked about the North West Mutual Bank. It isn't going to invest in the North West Mutual Bank. We know that. Its duty would stop it doing in such a risky investment. But likewise, you guys, not so long ago, voted for a city strategy that included the North West Mutual Bank. We didn't. We abstained because that wasn't part of our vision for this. We would like if the mutual bank wasn't in it, but given that it's only going to be considered and then probably rejected, on the base of it, we'll vote in favour because the general direction, as councillor Rollinson said, is about showing the pension fund that we want a certain direction. We should be looking for more ethical banking. So on the whole, we will support this. Thank you.
Councillor Little.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep this very brief. Lots of what I've wanted to say has already been said. I looked at this and didn't really want to support the bank, but on balance, everything else is making sense to me. I've recently just got into my own personal private stuff, and as councillor Wise was saying, I've changed the strategy that I have for my personal pension, more in line to the sort of climate change beliefs that I have. The question I've got is, I wasn't actually going to stand up, but it was mentioned there that with this recommendation, we would believe that the pension fund would be putting our money to good use. Is the insinuation there that it's currently not being put to good use? If that is the case, could we, as I did, change the fund to one that is more aligned with the beliefs that we want to have going forward? I'm not sure if that's something we can do, but I thought I'd just put it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Witten. Councillor Brooks, you have the right of reply now and to the question. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for the contributions. I think what this motion does say, and I did say it was a well-known saying, money is the root of all evil. But this motion was again reflected there, that you can use money for good. The wealth should reflect the principles of what we believe in, and that's what this motion is saying. Rather than have blind investments that could be used in to harm people and be totally against the principles, that wealth could generate and be used for good. So it's not just about the money, what it is, what does it represent? We think it should mean a better future for everybody. We live on the same planet. We want this planet protected for future generations. So we could just say, right, there's the money, spend it on what you like, the highest return. Don't matter how many people are murdered, it don't matter how much pollution there is, so long as we have the money. Where are you going to spend it when the planet's blown to pieces, there is nobody to, no shops, no nothing? That's when the value of wealth really strikes home. So we're looking here again, and I think, you know, it's saying that we want to have some influence on where, when it's deferred wages, when it's all said and done, where that money is going to go for its best possible return in terms of wellbeing for people, protecting the planet, and again, desisting from making people's lives total misery. So with this, and I'm just hoping you'll all reflect, and yes, a lot of it is look at, consider and do. But if we do nothing, we're complicit in, we'll do whatever you want with the money. We won't have a say, and we don't care. And this is saying, we do care. We want our money to make a difference. We want to show that Preston is, you know, for peace and for looking after other people. We've already shown it in some of the stuff we've done today. So why shouldn't our money reflect our principles and values? And that's what this motion says. So I hope you can all support the motion and put aside the quibbles. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. We'll now move to the vote, please. So all those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Presume that's carried. Thank you. Can somebody bring back the councillors who've left the chamber? Thanks, Cara. Just wait till they return, just for a few seconds, and then we'll carry on. Thank you. So the next item is a notice of motion on protecting Preston's residents from the impact of the county level bus lane schemes. This was originally submitted by councillor Atkins, but councillor Natha, I now understand that you're moving the motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In councillor Atkins' absence, I just want to, I'll assume that everybody's read the sort of motion. So I'm not going to go repeating it through, but I'd just like to make some observations, comments, if that's okay. Most, like most members here, I probably share the view that we want an integrated transport system in Preston and less pollution. But what I probably don't agree with, and I'm sure mostly you don't either, is random sort of initiatives that come along, in this instance, bus lanes, and two in particular controversial ones on Corporation Street and New Hall Lane, generating huge amounts of money. It's been mentioned over two and a half million in one year. That's just the Corporation Street scheme. New Hall Lane, they haven't got it operational yet, thank goodness. But in terms of, you know, people will say, well, they can see the signs, why are people going through the, you know, no entries and, you know, buses only or whatever. But I don't know that many people who go around towns with sort of bus lanes written on and cameras to try and get fines. So obviously, 80,000 people plus have been issued with fines. So this is, you know, the discussion today has been around sort of how we support as a local authority, people, residents in this city. What we have here is a local authority that's taking money away from residents. So we give, they take. So recently, a survey was done amongst residents in the New Hall Lane area or across Preston as well, and over 500 people responded, more than what the county council's consultation generated. And almost 100% said that they want to scrap the New Hall Lane bus lane. So in terms of the proposals that are made here, or the council resolves to do, is to ask the city council chief exec to write to the Lancashire County Council leader and the cabinet member for highways to initially suspend the Corporation Street bus lane and also not instigate the operation of the New Hall Lane one, as well as some transparency around where's all this money gone? And what are they using it for? And also to have a bigger, wider debate around integrated transport provision within the town. Because I'm sure we all agree that there's a need for public transport to help, you know, those who need public transport, but also to make it effective, and rather than just haphazard initiatives. I know there's an amendment, and I would hope that, you know, colleagues across on that side would, you know, support this motion. And then you can also promote yourselves as being consistently opposing the schemes. So my suggestion as a summary is basically scrap the bus lanes in the first instance, get some review of impact done. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a stealth tax that's been imposed on the residents of Preston, and we should be supporting residents of Preston. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Natha. Have we got a second for your notice of motion, councillor Sarwar? Are you going to speak now or later? Thank you. We've now got an amendment from councillor Potter on your seats. Can you move your amendment, please, councillor Potter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. Another chance for us to wonderfully get along. Isn't this wonderful? Now, when I thought councillor Atkins was going to be here in the chamber, given her newfound freedoms, I thought, oh, she might accept it as a friendly amendment. However, I doubt that is going to happen in this case. But these are a point of fact, because the fact of the matter is, the Liberal Democrats, this year, and I moved it, put forward an amendment to the county budget, which specifically called for the scrapping of the Corporation Street bus gate. It doesn't diminish what you're going to do on New Hall Lane, but that is what we put forward. Councillor Hindle was in the room, councillor Brown was in the room, councillor Khan was in the room. None of you supported it. However, I'm willing to let you grow and improve, and I'm delighted that you've joined our campaign to do it. And I should just point out, the party that did support the Lib Dems, it wasn't the Tories, it wasn't Labour, it was the Greens, because there's a principle. And if you believe, like I do, that actually regulating car flows to improve the businesses and lives of people in the area is worthwhile doing, great. But when you have badly designed schemes, it ruins that principles. And it allows people to attack any further work you want to do in that thing, no matter how many benefits it might bring. So that's where the bus gate comes in. I have no problem with the principle, but the inaction of it was terrible. And we've seen £2 million of fines for us. And I'm delighted also, I should just point out, Sir Mark Hendrick, always on the button, delightful he came on board recently as well. It only took him a couple of years. But, you know, he has such a busy schedule, not turning up at Parliament for votes. So I'm really glad he's come on board now and supported this as well. So this is nothing but fact. There's no doubt my amendment is true. It is on public record at county council. The figures are all there. For you to vote against this is just showing a party political bias, which I'm sure is what you're going to do. But it should, on the record for all time, notice that the Lib Dems did put this forward in February. That is not in question. I hope you'll support the amendment. I doubt you will, but let's move on with the rest of the motion.
Is that seconded, please? Councillor Duke, do you wish to speak?
I wish to reserve my right to speak.
I don't. Is that allowed? Can you?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Sorry, councillor Henshaw.
Can I just say on the amendment then? So there wasn't one on my seat, but looking online, it appears that the only amendment is that the Lib Dem group would like, would like to take the opportunity of saying that we did it first. And I'm just not into this opportunistic political game playing at all. So no, I can't support this amendment. Thanks.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As regards amendment, I can't agree more with you there. I think it is just the Liberal Party want to bang its drum again. But just to save me speaking twice, I'll sum up everything about the substantive and this particular notice of motion. I spoke to the cabinet member responsible for this this morning about it, actually. And the reason why they want to do these bus lanes is because, you know, that the traffic in the morning is horrendous going through Preston. And the bus lanes do facilitate the buses to be more punctual, to be on time. And they have the figures to actually back this up, which are available to you if you want me to go get them. Happy to go and get them and share them with you. But on the fact that they've got evidence that these bus lanes are beneficial to the public transport network, I really think I can't support the motion. And I think it would be just probably, I know it says it's generated a lot of money in fines, and my wife's contributed to a quite substantial part, I believe. So, but, you know, it is frustrating when you get a fine.
Have you declared an interest?
Do I have to? Well, you're finding out now. So the, yeah, it is, it does generate money. There's no two ways about it. It does do that. But if people go down a bus lane when they shouldn't do, then there has to be a penalty. That's a penalty, and it does generate money. Nobody's making excuses for that. But the point is, they're trying to improve the public transport network in Preston City. So on the back of what you've told me, I can't support this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Brown?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I just want to pay tribute to councillor Sarwar especially, who worked within New Hall Lane. Siraj for what was an excellent speech. I mean, this is a very sensible motion, isn't it? What we're suggesting is we have an evidence base and that we suspend any fines people get. But we actually get the evidence from the county council about what's going wrong in terms of the amount of people that are being fined, as well as the effectiveness of the scheme. And it might not be we scrap the bus gate, but we look to amend the bus gate to make sure the problems are ironed out. Because we do see the need for traffic management and promoting public transport as well. So, you know, I think this is a brilliant motion that we're taking forward. And I think it addresses an issue that many people have been written to, county council level, city council level. And it's faithful straight into reform administration, like the Tory administration before, just not listening to councillors when we actually put in complaints. Because honestly, you get some kind of like stock answer that's been written by an officer. You know, it's very frustrating, as county council colleagues know. So I think it's really good. And it's a very pragmatic, sensible way of looking at it, really, Madam Mayor. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Can I just remind members we're speaking on the amendment, please? Councillor Actar, please. Thank you.
I'm going to pass in that case. I'll go back to the substantive. Thank you.
Okay, that's councillor Bailey. Same, you're passing now. Yeah, that's fine. Councillor Little.
That was just a really quick statement to councillor Henshaw. She says she doesn't like the political games and things. In this here, it clearly states Preston Labour Group councillors have consistently. They also bring into Sir Mark Hendrick, all we want is a matter of fact added into here to say that we are also behind this. There's nothing really too political, more than what they're doing. So it'll be interesting to see how you vote on theirs, anyway. Thank you.
Councillor Duke, you seconded, and you have a right to reply. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I'm one ahead of you even. I actually submitted an inquiry to LCC a couple of weeks ago about the New Hall Lane bus gate. Because although it's not my patch, I regularly travel that way. And the feedback I got from a bus driver who lives in my ward, who contacted me about something else, was that it is not helping the flow of traffic, because the traffic and the buses are still getting stuck where they meet with London Road. So it's not having the advantages that you would hope to see from that bus lane. Secondly, the other concern that was raised with me is that with the way the bus gate has been designed, there are multiple gaps, and people are overtaking buses, then turning left to head to the Bingo or Lidl, or whatever it is down there, trampoline place, I think, isn't there as well? And there have been multiple accidents on that stretch of road because it is badly designed. So apart from anything else, you know, for the Lib Dem amendment, that is factually correct, but I'm happy to work cross-party. But the information I got back from LCC was, you have to give us specific examples of where there are problems. So just saying, these problems are happening on this stretch of road, wasn't good enough. So if you actually want to change what LCC do, you need to give them specific examples of specific areas of the bus gate where safety is a problem. So I would just say, I would ask So I would just say, I would ask people to vote for the motion amendment, sorry, thank you, John, because I think the majority of us are actually in agreement that something needs to be done and it needs to be reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Duke. councillor Natha, I bring you back in before we go to the vote on the amendment, please.
I'm okay, I'm right. I exercise my right to not speak.
Just go.
Right. Now, we're now voting on the amendment. So can we have all those in favour, please? Thank you. Have you got? Have we done that? Yeah. All those against, please? Thank you. Any abstentions? The amendment is sworn. Thank you. So we now go back to the original motion. So councillor Wise, you wanted to come in first, please. Thank you.
Yeah. One side of New Hall Lane is in my ward of Fishwick and Frenchwood, and actually it's the side where the bus lane is. And I think that is, it's such a critical road coming into Preston that is just absolutely ridiculous. And I want to pay credit to councillor Sarwar for the work that he's done on this issue, which has been absolutely amazing. And I mean, I take on board what councillor Duke has just said, that it was supposed to have specifics, but, which is actually quite hard when it actually isn't yet in action. But anybody with any sense in their head would recognise this is just going to cause huge problems. It's not, it's not going to, as you've pointed out, it's not actually going to help the buses and it's going to infuriate the local residents and also people coming into Preston. So I just think it is a mad idea. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wise. councillor Actar, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. I think I was just going to make a small reflection on having used the New Hall Lane sort of stretch of road in particular. There are a number of really significant choke points along that, along that stretch, the Acre Gate Lane junction, the Scaffington Road junction, the St Mary's junction, and then the London Road junction. And it really doesn't help when side roads, for example, St Mary's Street have been closed off now for the best part of a year. So if, as you want, if you want to use a local business in the area, as I did very recently, you either had to park illegally on the main road or you had to drive for miles almost. And given that I needed to go to a car repair shop to get the car repaired, that wasn't really very practical because you can't even go to St Mary's to get it around the back of the garages, the businesses on that area. The problem is that also, of course, the bus lane isn't one, you know, can long, it doesn't stretch wide across the road. There are breaks at various intervals, which means that any advantage that was gained by the buses is very quickly lost because they're then stuck again in the traffic, fighting and competing for a very narrow stretch of a bus lane. And the third piece really is in relation to the fines, there is so much street clutter, you know, on pavements and on the road signs, it is nigh impossible to catch, particularly if there's a great big bus standing in front of it, to even see the road sign, let alone, you know, adhere to the rules that are being set out for us. And the same problem, of course, applies to the tollgate that's been set up on Corporation Street for people traveling, you know, between the university. What's happened is that all the traffic, and I include myself as a driver in this, are now going off of that road, down the side streets to get back, join again at the junction by Ringway. It is a nightmare, you know, for local businesses because the roads are all choked up, but there are no alternative outlets or ways to get to the railway station in any meaningful or easy way. And so it was a really ill-thought-through plan and I credit, thank you to councillor Sarwar for the work he's done and to local residents. Poorly thought out, poorly engaged in terms of, I mean, I think there were only 52 or 54 responses to the local, to the county council's own survey and engagement exercise, which was really poor, versus the 500 or so to the exercise that I think councillor Sarwar had engaged in. So poorly designed, you know, process. And since councillor Thompson is now our representative on LCC on behalf of us, I hope that you'll say that back to them and whisper in their little gentle ears that, you know, they need to have a little rethink. And it would do you wonders in this chamber if they did so. It really would. And it'd be good for the city if we actually took a more pragmatic and sensible approach to road traffic management, which is what we need here. Thanks.
Thank you. councillor Bailey, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, madam mayor. It's just to make comments, councillor Thompson, it's interesting that, you know, reforms stand for sort of small government and, you know, less red tape and here you are sort of defending the idea of more government, more governance, and obviously all that kind of thing that come with it. I also think it's noticeable that maybe you're defending this because LCC are currently £30 million over budget in this current one. So, you know, so much for Doge working for you in the LCC. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Bailey. councillor Potter, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. So, yeah, I'm also quite surprised at councillor Thompson's attitude in this. I never would have downed him as an anti-motorist woke politician, but, you know, there's been a lot of surprises today. It's really impressive. But I've got, I've got some news for you folks as well, because this is hot from Lancashire County Council. So we talk about, and I'm sure people that want to justify the bus gate will say, you know, yes, £2 million fines is awful, but you know what? We'll make your roads better. Today, it has been revealed at the next cabinet meeting at Lancashire County Council, they are going to halve the residential resurfacing budget. So what we are getting is a rubbish system, lots of fines and our roads getting worse. So whatever Lancashire County Council and reforms say, they are not your friends, you cannot trust them with our roads, you cannot trust them to look after our businesses and you cannot trust them to look after the best interests of Prestonians. We'll vote in favour of this and remember who's keeping it in place. Thank you.
councillor Sarwar, it's a second day, you can come back in now, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. I think just to add on to councillor Potter's points there, safety of women as well, as we've seen before with the white ribbon cancellation, what councillor Thompson mentioned earlier. Street lighting, as we know, is a huge issue in parts, in majority areas of Preston, especially in my ward, St Matthews. And the money generator from the bus fines, where's it going? What are you improving? So I think, having listened to everyone's comments, I think it's clear that this bus lane has been pushed through without proper consultation and residents feel ignored, they're facing heavy fines, there's confusion, there's stress, as we've seen with a local teacher recently in the papers. And ultimately, it's a failure to listen to residents, failure to listen to local people. And I've always said that New Hall Lane is the artery of Preston. You know, it's a main road, one of the main roads, probably the main road of Preston. And when you disrupt the lane, you disrupt Preston. We all want better transport, that's all we can agree on. But it's got to be fair, it's got to be sustainable, it's got to be supported by the communities it affects. So I think the motion that's been put forward by councillor Natha, it's a motion that gives us a chance to call for openness, gives us a chance for proper evidence and for a proper review into how this bus lane was devised. I mean, we know the Tories, they pushed the reform when they keep it, PCC want to abolish it. So I hope everyone can support the motion. Obviously, I know the Lib Dems, you've had your motion, so we've not supported that obviously, but I think ultimately it shows that the direction that we take this motion today, it shows our residents that their voice matter. And that's why we're elected into these positions, because we represent our residents and it's our residents that are being affected. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Sarwar. councillor Natha, you have the choice to come in now to sum up before we go to the vote, please.
I think just to say that, thank you members for everybody commenting on the scheme. It's, as I said, it's, you know, has no rhyme or reason. And I hope that in the new authority or even before, but from councillor Thompson's suggestions, I don't think his party's going to do anything. So I hope that the, in the new authority, if a Lib Dem coalition or each, we will, we will hope to remove it. Not coalition, but working together, we can remove this scheme. Thank you.
Right, okay. Thank you councillor Natha. Oh, councillor Sarwar, did you want to come back in? I'm not.
Yes, can I quickly say, councillor Duke mentioned earlier, LCC are looking for specifics. We have to look at the responses from the survey, they'll find that they'll get 500 specifics. So just have a read of that.
Thank you. We're going to go to the vote now, please. So we're voting on the original notice of motion. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. I don't think there's anyone against. Oh, yes. Right, okay. Any abstentions? That's carried. Thank you. Item 17 is the leaders' report, which is for noting only. councillor Brown, do you wish to speak on this report, which is for noting? No, thank you. That's noted. Oh, sorry, I need to ask you to show a hands to note. Can we do a show of hands to note the report? Thank you. Item 18 is special urgency decisions. However, there are none to report this meeting. Item 19 is the date of next meeting, which is an extraordinary one to consider the local government reorganisation report, and this will be held on Wednesday, the 26th of November at 3pm. The next ordinary meeting will take place on Thursday, the 11th of December at 10am, please note, in the town hall. Thank you now. That concludes today's meeting. Thank you all.